Hello, hello. Hi Shamira Sterling. I see Erin, I see Charlotte. I see Kimba and Manya and Jeff. How are you doing?
Good evening, everyone. And welcome back. It doesn't probably feel like a welcome back to to the school folks. Been doing this for weeks, but for the board members, welcome back. New school year.
New school year. Alrighty.
And we and and you tried to trick us, but it looks like you're just testing how sharp the board is this year. I I and I said last June, this is one of the best boards we've ever had and look how quickly we've all gotten over to the new Zoom link.
It was a quiz. It was to see whether or not you're reading your email. Our Zoom accounts all timed out this summer. It was actually a broader situation. Everyone Zoom link. Uh it would well Zoom was very generous during quarantine in the pandemic and then they lost that generosity. All of a sudden. And so all of the deals that they had cut around unlimited, you know, time on these different links. They rescinded basically kind of all of that. So everything.
Now that we don't know how to live without them.
Exactly. Now now pay for us. Pay a lot.
Best best marketing strategy ever.
That's right.
Yeah, I hope the other folks will um. I have to admit, I it took me until it was like six oh one and I'm like Tracy's never late starting this meeting. I better check my email.
Wendy, can we um send a group text message also? Because folks typically, yeah, they have their phones.
Yeah. But let's see, one, two, three, four, five. I think there are only five of us, so we do need a couple more folks, but um did you all have a chance to read your minutes? Because I am gonna need a motion for that in a second. And we are also gonna need um Kemba's agreed to move when when the time comes for closing our session. So we can hear our park data, but I'm gonna need a second for that.
Me, I don't know if it's working for them. There. Lots of breaking up.
You're breaking up for me. Are am I breaking up for others?
No, Jeff is breaking up for us, I think.
Jeff, you want to drop off and rejoin and see if that fixes it with Zoom? And make sure you've closed the other Zoom meeting if you were in there like I was. Or I know with Zoom, sometimes you have to close almost everything before it'll really fully cooperate. Okay, I'm getting text messages. Alright, there we go. Great, there we've got Jennifer, Roxanne.
Hello.
Hello, hello. Good evening. Alright, so we now have enough people to start, so I think we should go ahead. Um so let's start as we always do by reciting our mission, remembering why we're here. The mission of Paul is and to develop in them the capacity to be responsible citizens, independent thinkers and leaders. And that's why we're here and that's what we're gonna do. So with that, I need a motion to accept the June minutes. Cast your mind back to what feels like a long time ago. And if somebody feels uh that they can remember that far back and and vouch for the fact that the minutes accurately described what we did, thank goodness for the minutes so that we don't have to remember. And I have a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Thank you Sterling. And a second? Thanks Jeff. Alright, so all in favor, Kimba? Jeff?
Yes.
Sterling?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Shamira?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Roxanna?
abstain.
Very good. Thank you, everyone. And the minutes are approved. So those of you who weren't, who are still making your way over from the other Zoom link, congratulations. We've all passed our beginning of the year test by quickly moving to the new link. Welcome to the new school year. And we will start as we always do with our CEO report. Over to Tracy.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I just want to formally say that I'm not sure that we should proceed with this meeting if our honorary board member Xavier Jones does not at some point in time make an appearance. I saw Christina Jones.
He is eating dinner right now, which is why I'm late because I can't do this with a toddler. Look, there he goes.
I'm just saying, thank you. Thanks Xavier's here, guys. We can absolutely.
Xavier, they announced your name. You want to say hi?
Hi.
Oh, he said he said no.
Okay, that's fine. We didn't know that he was present so that we could proceed.
Literally next to me.
Now we can proceed. Alright, good evening, everyone, and I hope you all had a phenomenal um summer. Uh and you know, it's been, I can't believe that the fall is here. We started welcoming um our uh sixth grade uh student, sixth grade, ninth grade, new to Paul students yesterday. Today, we welcomed our sixth grade, new to Paul seventh and eighth grade and returning tenth grade this uh today. Um and we will continue with that orientation schedule tomorrow, adding a grade um you know, each day for our high school and then eventually one hundred percent of our students will be in attendance on Monday. So we are literally um back in action. Um with that, unfortunately, I had to send out the news to the board about our wonderful um um student Darian um uh Darian. I sent that earlier this week to let you all know that we had a student, Darian Herring, who unfortunately lost his life to gun violence on um Thursday of this week. Um that is, of course, as you all can imagine, has been incredibly diffi- difficult for the Paul community. He was a member of the class of twenty twenty, super active student. He went to Paul for for seven years from grade six all the way to grade twelve. Um amazing, amazing soul and amazing human being as all of our students are. Um and like I said, unfortunately, lost his life this week. Um we're gonna be celebrating his life tomorrow. We're having uh there's gonna be a private vigil that held at his family's um home that you know, we're gonna attend, but it is just really, really, please keep his family, his mother in particular, um who has been an amazing Paul parent. Um super active with Darian and um you know, just really, really, really the love of his life and he was the love of hers. And so just keep her lifted up in your prayers and your warm thoughts and we're gonna be there to support her and you know, and her family on tomorrow. If there, you know, are any ways and opportunities for the board to reach out and or connect, I'll make sure that I make those clear. But just know, we will always send um you know, uh you know, sentiments on behalf of Paul and in those sentiments, make sure that we include um the board as part of that extension of our love um and our care and our concern for the family. So it's been a hard year for violence uh for Paul. We have literally at this point, lost two of our students and we've had um now two students who have been the victims of gun violence. Fortunately, they survived. All of them have been boys. Um but it has definitely been a very difficult from May to this point. We've had four of our children who have been shot. Nothing connected to our school. Uh but you know, really connected to the state of unfortunately, the world and the community. So please continue to keep, like I said, uh Paul, our students, I pray for our children and their safety and everyone's safety every single day. Prayers, warm thoughts, well wishes, whatever, just keep them at the center of of everything that you that you think about. Um because they need it right now. Yeah. So hard um and somber, but definitely wanted to lift him up at the beginning um of our meeting. Um and so with that, um kind of moving through and 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 transitioning to the CEO's report, um I'm actually gonna start from the bottom and work my way up. Um we have participated this um summer in a couple of DC Public Charter School Board meetings. One um to get the approval for our virtual Fridays. I think I've had this conversation with at least the executive committee and the school performance committee, but just to share with the broader committee, I attended the PCSB Board Meeting in June um where we needed to give testimony and we submitted a request or or a proposal to amend our charter to have the autonomy and flexibility to have virtual Friday sessions. Um I presented that proposal uh in the June Board Meeting. In the July Board Meeting, they voted. And very uh fortunately, they um agreed to allow us to have a pilot year for virtual Fridays. We will come back to the Public Charter School Board at the end of the year uh for them to take a good look at our data and make the decision about whether or not it can be a permanent amendment to our charter, which is really important. Um even if there are years where Paul decides to not exercise the flexibility to have virtual Fridays, to have that option in the charter is super important for our students, especially given the complexities associated with educating our scholars in today's world and the complexities to associate uh associated with um educating scholars, many of whom are new to um the country. Scholars who have duties and responsibilities that extend far beyond um just making sure that they're attending school. So we will keep you all in tune with that. Um we also attended um the PCSB Board Meeting in July for the vote on virtual Fridays and then to also present um our adjusted enrollment schedule uh for the fifth grade expansion. As you all know, um Paul has a as a part of their charter um the ability to service students in grades five through twelve. We've not yet exercised um our, you know, ability to service students in grade five, but we intend to do that at the beginning of school year twenty twenty-three. Um but we needed to submit an adjusted enrollment schedule. So we presented that schedule at the July meeting and they will vote on it in September. I don't perceive that there will be any issues and or challenges with that and we'll make sure that we keep you all in the loop. Um Will and I met today uh for a wonderful lunch meeting where we discussed um you know, fifth grade and we have a couple of consultants in the hopper who are going to kind of usher us through the planning process to make sure that we're ready. You know, our biggest marker is December uh in terms of like marketing materials and those types of things so that we can start to advertise that we will service fifth grade students starting in the upcoming year. To be quite honest with you, um the, you know, other pieces around like curriculum and those types of things, those things will be a lift, but that's not the huge concern. The big concern right now is marketing and making sure that we get the twenty-five students that we're aiming for. Um so let me pause there with the fifth grade expansion of virtual Fridays and find out, are there any questions? Nope. We're good. Kimba, you have a question?
Doc from White, if I could chime in, the what Dr. White is referencing uh in December is of course Ed Fest, which is our kind of initiative, our our formal initiative, but that's that's kind of the 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 last announcement, right? So we're like, it's very important that the build up to the announcement. So kind of like leaking the conversation and making sure our fam- our current families know about it. Um they are not, they're not gonna be surprised in December, right? And so it's it's uh a lot of this planning work that has already occurred is going to happen between now and well, really between October and December. So um the December is this, the December timeline is the the final announcement that's meant is the most public, but uh you know, I think that's important to note for our current families because they'll be a part of this planning and announcing process.
The my my question, my question was, why do you perceive getting twenty-five children's families into the fifth grade will be a challenge? I I just wanna know what you are, uh because that that didn't seem like it like it's such a high number that it seems to be challenging, but but why is that the predicted hurdle um at this time?
I don't think that it'll be a challenge per se, right? Like, I think it's the most important thing, though. Like, I don't think it'll be hard. I think it's just what's most important. Like, we can, curriculum and all that kind of stuff, we control. But um people, you know, families signing on to send their kids to Paul, I'm sorry, to send their kids to Paul is the unpredictable variable. And so I don't think it'll be difficult, but it's the one thing that we actually don't control in this process. So I just want to be mindful of that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Well, and and also um, Kimba, the if we, if there are thirty kids that are excited, then that turns into a new challenge, right? So it's it's important that we stick with twenty-five, right? So if if we have thirty-five kids, that's a different type of planning, right? Because we s- that impacts our master schedule. Fifteen to twenty-five is the same conversation. Twenty-five to thirty-five is a new conversation, so.
Staffing and and all of that other stuff. Yeah, that I understand. Yeah. Yeah, thanks.
I'm not sure if that was me, me breaking up or Kimba, but um.
Yeah.
I have a question and and I'm sorry if you answered this already, but how are we entering into the conversation with the current fourth graders to the feeder schools or the schools we traditionally pull kids from? I know we don't have traditional feeder schools, but I know we have maybe a couple of schools that normally send their kids to Paul.
Yep. So two very important reasons. So two two uh very important ways. So we're very strategically conscientious of this year's enrollment. So we are not catering a lot of um our conversation to um our rising fifth graders pre-August fifth or sixth, whatever enrollment day is. Um come count day, we are, we have several initiatives in place to make sure it's very publicly known that our fifth grade has, are very impressive, very exciting, fifth grade has twenty-five-ish spots um present and available. Um at, you know, as Dr. Wright already alluded to, and you guys are well in the conversation on our Fridays, um our building on Fridays is free, right? So we we will have probably thirty, maybe, I don't know, forty kids. Charlotte probably has a better pulse on than actual number. Um students that will be in the building on Fridays. Um kids who have issues with wifi or just, you know, unique needs, right? So our our building will be mostly vacant. So after um October fifth or sixth, whatever count day is, um those rising fifth graders, so current fourth graders will be will, we are strategically ca- kind of catering us a very brief short uh Friday program for those kids to come in the building and just kind of like get the lay of the land and there will be kit teachers who will be doing mock lessons. And so we're 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 hoping that it's a very kind of in-person, formal um human connection on Fridays from essentially October fifth, sixth, seventh through Ed Fest, where those rising fifth graders are literally experiencing the young um kind of young middle school that we want them to experience when they are really in the fifth grade. And so um that's a very broad answer to your question, Christina, but um the 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 plan, we we've already begun the outreach to the communities and the families and the schools who have or kind of into the fourth grader and who's who's who we know their families are interested in our kind of our fifth grade model. So very broad, happy to go in more detail later, but that's kind of big picture what our plan is.
I would add to that, Christina, that you know, the thing about DC is that it's just a mixed bag in terms of when families are looking for middle schools. If you are a charter family, you start looking for middle schools when your child is in the third grade. Because there are a lot of charter schools that formally in their elementary program at grade three. Then there's another set that in their elementary program at grade four, and then there are those traditional elementary schools, which is more in line with DCPS schools that in their uh formal elementary program at grade five. And so the name of the game at this point is like marketing and we have, you know, very specific plans relative to marketing to include what Will talked about in terms of opening up the building on Friday. But the biggest piece is just getting the word out there that, hey, we're taking fifth graders too. And so add us to the list when you start thinking about where you want to send your child for your middle school experience.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, so moving on, uh just wanted to report out really quickly. Uh this is a nod back to our that old school strategic plan that we had several years ago. One of the things that was in there was the addition of a college and career readiness specialist. Um that was one of the goals of that strategic plan. We have finally realized that goal. We have added um both the position and we have hired and staffed that role. They should be starting in the next couple of weeks um to really serve and support. Um you know, the work of making sure that our students are college and career ready. Um the school performance committee is gonna receive a really special surprise treat. Jeff, you and I will talk about this surprise treat in the next couple of months. Ben and I talked about it today. There is a need for us to really broaden the way that we think about um our students' high school experience to uh instead of thinking about getting kids to graduate for high school, it's shifting our perspective and really getting our students um you know, college and career ready. And there's a difference. High school completion is one thing. College and career readiness is a totally different thing. And so often we focus on this, you gotta graduate from high school, you gotta graduate from high school. Where kids are graduating from high school all over the country and they're not ready for college and they're not ready for career. And so in a line uh in alignment with our actual mission for the organization, our goal, of course, is we want our kids to finish high school, but what's most important to us is that they're both college and career ready. And that is, you know, the collective work of everyone on, you know, Team Paul. But our college and career readiness is really gonna focus in on that specifically and eventually make sure that we have the requisite six through twelve pro or five through twelve, grade five through twelve programming to get our students ready and especially make sure that they have the transitional support that they need. Um we are going to review um a a a report that um one of our amazing staff members, Ms. Flora, put together to talk about the profile of a college, of a Paul cred- uh of a Paul college graduate. Um so that we can, she's taken a very close analytical look at um what the profile looks like of our students who have been most successful in going to college and persisting. And so, you know, there is this push that we now have um to really make sure that our students are meeting the markers that are associated with the markers of those children who have left us and successfully finished college in X number of years, whether it was four or five years. Sometimes it takes people on be kids longer, but we want to make sure that our students are equipped properly to finish. Um so that's really exciting. We also staffed, actually back in the spring, our learning recovery specialist. Her name is Ms. Ock- Mrs. Ockert, and she's phenomenal. And her whole goal is to really coordinate and oversee all of the different recovery efforts that are underway at Paul. Um in our organization, we have this kind of code and it's a code that you hear oftentimes if you're taking the train or um if you're on the plane, and it is if you see something, say something. Well, at Paul, we say if you see something, do something. And what we mean about that is that if you see that something is not going right relative to our students and their academic performance, you have to do something about it. You have to do something about it. Like, you can't see it and talk about it and then walk away. What we realized in the uh spring is I commissioned, recommissioned uh Manya to kind of pull together this monster spreadsheet that had all of our students who are receiving some sort of intervention. And what we recognize is that as an organization, we really live by that creed. If we see something, we do something. And there are many children who are receiving multiple interventions, which is nice, but not always necessary. And so part of Ms. Ocker's work is to really coordinate our in our approach to interventions and to make sure that children are getting exactly what they need so that they they can progress the way that they need to progress. Uh so really excited to add her to the fold. Um last two things, Professional Development Institute, we shifted from two weeks to one week. Um it was really wonderful. Last week, we had a great time. Shout out to the board members who were able to participate in um our new to Paul dinner that we had at um Succotash downtown. It was a really, really wonderful event. Truly enjoyed it. Our our new to Paul staff enjoyed it. Um and it was just a really, really good and light start to the new year. So I'm really happy about that. Um and you could definitely feel that energy as we moved into bringing our students back. And the last piece is is that I'm going to share with you all during uh closed session, our park data. Um they were released uh like late last week. Um they are still embargoed. My understanding is that they will probably be embargoed, I think, until tomorrow. I need to double check that. Um but we will talk about that data in the closed session. Um last two updates, um well, last couple of quick updates. Uh enrollment, we're at seven hundred and forty-three students as of today. Yay. Um our list of no-shows is shrinking. This is par for the course uh when we come back to school. Um still hoping to meet that marker of seven hundred and fifty-two children. Um and we will make sure that we keep you all up to date relative to that. Um in terms of COVID policies, you know, they have changed drastically for the new school year. No need to kind of dig into that. Um but just know that as an organization, we continue to uh man- have mandatory mask mandates. It is what makes uh most of our families feel most comfortable. It is what makes staff feel most comfortable and we're going to continue in that space until, you know, we make a decision to to go into um you know, an optional space. So that's all relative to the COVID piece. Um the Paul PCS Wellness, um Wellness is a huge initiative for um schools, uh you know, of course, as you all know this, uh at given the return from quarantine and the pandemic. Um we've done some really intentional planning for our staff, our families and our students around wellness. We have point individuals um across the organization who are managing the work of wellness in all of those three buckets. And so uh we will regularly talk about wellness. It's really important, given the educator crisis, um not just in Washington DC, but abroad. Um and we feel really, really good about the work and the plans that we have in this area. And then the last thing is um you all, we have teachers in every classroom and that is to be celebrated. We have actual teachers, like real teachers, not like college students coming, you know, when they have a free period to teach children. Because we know that that's not what's best for kids. We have actual teachers in all of our classrooms who are there to welcome our students. And so that with that, um I will close out and pump back to you, Erin, in terms of, you know, my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on any of the other parts of the report before we move on? So there's a lot to celebrate about the start of the school year despite um having to start with that really sad news, but it's been a a really positive start in so many ways. And after two sorts, you know, just rocky years of of um dealing with the pandemic, it it's really great to have a good, solid start. Um and you've put such good plans in in place. Um we are going to move over to the treasures report. And when you're doing that, Will, if you would, just remind us of what the number was that the budget is based on, because I know that the you know, that's a different number than that internal target. So how close are we to that number if you, if it if that's not putting you on the spot?
Um Erin, I can't tell if it's my internet. Maybe it's mine. I I think you asked a question. Um and I'm oh, I'm not sure I heard it very well. Um could you say that one more time for me?
Sure. Let me just ask though, am I breaking up for other people? So I'm getting some yeses and
Things seem to be breaking up.
Definitely randomly.
Okay, but Will, the um question was just, what is our internal, uh, sorry, what is our budget number for enrollment? Did you hear me that time?
Yeah, I think so. So our budgeted roll enrollment number is seven thirty-two. We've exceeded that that number. Um.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Just wanted to check that too, because I know Tracy's always got her eye on this high number. But I'm looking at our budgeted number at just as intently. So great to aim high, but we made our budget. Right? Which is really critical. Yeah, okay.
Well, okay, yes, but the the reason why Dr. I has, Dr. White has her number on the high number is because the the number isn't a real number until October fifth. And so um we know that there is some variance in our um final numbers between now and October fifth, uh, fifth or sixth. And so we um, we aim for a higher number because there are families that make different choices for their children um between today and October fifth. And until we have them in our face, in our classrooms, in our building, uh, we don't know, there's only so much we can work with and predict. So um, we have exceeded um, those targets as currently, as we currently stand. And if you if you look at us in the year before COVID, we have exceeded those numbers as well, but only nominally. And so we hold that loosely. And so um, we are confident that we will in inevitably exceed our in uh our budgeted enrollment. Um, but we, you know, our kind of enrollment hustle, our hustle is never done. But our enrollment hustle is um is in particular um not complete until count day. And so we are conscientious of that. Um, number Dr. White uh shared with us earlier, just because we know that families have to make different decisions and not frequently, but occasionally we have to make this decisions for them as well. And so we um, we want to make sure to be conscious and respectful of that. So um uh, if you, if we're talking about from the treasurer's for report, there's not anything substantive um to report unless Sterling wants me to go, kind of go into some details, but um, we ended the year i- in a very strong cash position as we predicted all year long. And uh we exceeded our enrollment targets from last year on as well. So um, we feel very confident with the um, as we think about the budget that you guys passed in May or I guess first of June, um, as it was aligned to our um uh strategic plan, um, we feel confident that that budget will carry us through and um with authority and the the new season. So um, that is a very, very high level brief summary of the treasurer's report.
Thank you. Ben, everyone has the slide deck in your in your board book. So let's just pause and ask Sterling if there's anything you want to add or if there are any questions from anyone.
Uh, nothing to add, just that uh looking backwards, we still have the uh final uh audit that uh is going to be done for the end of the fiscal year, but strong last year, the focus is on this current year that we're in, and that's where we are.
Great. Well, there, as I've reminded you, um, probably too many times, there are two things that we really are responsible for, and one is financial stewardship and the other is the academic performance of of the students. So we, that's, that's our financial stewardship piece for tonight. And when we go into executive session, we'll hear about the academic performance. All right. So um what I would like to oh, uh, Will, sorry, I see on the agenda, you also update to COVID policies, but I think Dr. White already addressed those. Did you have anything else you needed to say about that or you're okay?
No, I mean, I think the big thing is that we are taking that that I think is important for you guys to know is that we are taking only a s- slightly, but importantly, um, different position on masks. Masks citywide and schoolwide are uh uh recommended, but optional, and Paul is requiring masks. So both staff and students are required to be um vaccinated. And because we only serve a middle, we only, we start serving children in sixth grade. Something like ninety-seven percent of our children are required to be vaccinated. Um, there are a handful of eleven-year-olds in our sixth grade that are not required. Um, but outside of that, they are required to be vaccinated or um prove uh you know, show medical or religious exemption. Um, but uh, we, Paul, and it it reflect as was reflected in our PDI experience and certainly in the first few days of school. Um, we, you know, students understand that we are wearing masks. Um, they're available for anyone who forgets a mask and staff are understanding of that as well, which is slightly more um careful than just any kind of typical school. Uh, just for your information, the reason why we've chosen that is and you know, I'll be honest, Dr. Right now, talk, or Dr. White now talked about this today. Like, we, we are very eager to be done with the masking situation. But we do believe in very deeply and importantly, that it is a lot harder um on our children if we switch back and forth. And so not understanding what's going to happen with COVID this coming winter. Um, it wa- it it felt easier and more in better, healthier service to our children to go ahead and start strong with a required mask plan at Paul than it did seem uh appropriate to re-mask come November one or something like that, which we are, we are wondering if will, that will be a, you know, a reality for our kids or for our, excuse me, our colleagues in other schools. So um things are great on the COVID front. Come November, we will reconsider, but at this point, it's easier to say the course than it is to kind of go back and forth.
Yeah. And I would just say that, you know, for staff is is so long as it makes staff feel more comfortable also, like we need to be mindful of that. Um, because, you know, we all know about the state of education in the world and all of those good things. And it's just a small thing to wear masks. I mean, I don't love masks. None of us love masks, but um if it feels like it is keeping us safe, and Paul has had a really good run in terms of keeping very low COVID numbers. Um, and our children and our uh staff have done an amazing job of staying masked up, staying safe, um, getting vaccinated. Like, we just want to live in this space because we don't need any unnecessary interruptions to education. So that's where we are.
What what is the policy when someone tests positive in terms of uh either attending school or having to uh quarantine? How does that work?
Yeah. Well, you want to give a a quick explanation of that? Because it's very different from what it was.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, um. Um, so in terms of quarantine, um, and exposure, we're going to be very strict um with DC Health's standards. Um, so uh, depending on the exposure, uh, we have a committee who evaluates um whether or not you as a staff member or as a child should return to the building um in terms of COVID testing. Um, if you test positive, I believe that the, and unfortunately, my team is not present. But I believe that the number is five days um from positive test. And so we, we adhere to that strictly. Um, there are several other questions that we ask in the kind of interview process about um symptoms date and um severity of symptoms. We have an evaluation of um to determine if you're asymptomatic versus um symptomatic versus severely symptomatic. So we have a way of assessing that. And so um the DC Health standards are honestly, despite our several grievances with how they've handled the communication, um, their uh current standard of how we assess how long someone, adult or child, should be quarantined um for um feels very clear and black and white at this time. So if you want to go in super detail, I can get that for you. I don't think that's what you want, but yeah, we have a plan.
It's not, you know, there's a plan. That's what's good to know. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks very much. Okay, I'm just watching the time and I do want to make sure we have enough time for our park data um discussion. So we've had a lot of updates. Now it's time for us to work. Um, so uh, we've been listening and that's great. And now we're going to talk. Uh, can I ask everyone, please, if you would, go to your board book and find the document called SY twenty twenty-two twenty-three Board Work Plan and pull that up if you would. This is a draft, so I'm just going to go over what it is. Um, and it's a draft and and we need everybody's input on it. Um, and I've already heard something tonight that's caused me to realize we're going to need to update one part. So each year we establish our board goals. We say what above and beyond what what we normally do, all of our normal functions um, which are outlined in our bylaws. We also have additional goals. And this year in June, out of our retreat, three uh goals emerged. And those three are the to monitor and track the fifth grade expansion, to monitor the implementation of virtual Fridays, and to update or to develop our board policies. So we have um those, identified those three. So the first um sort of question for us tonight, and I'll go through all of it, but the first question for us is are those the right three? Are there any other things that have emerged since June that we ought to be considering? Um, or are there any, you know, variations to to what we've got here? Are these, are these the right things? And are we doing the right things about these three? Then the next thing is which committee um is the primary committee that is responsible? And so for those three, the first one, the fifth grade expansion is where I already realized that we need to add the um oh, what's it called? It's called Marketing, Marketing Development and PR Committee. Um, which is the one that's chaired by Pamela, so we'll need to definitely get her involved. But with what you were saying in terms of getting ready for Ed Fest, that's where that committee would actually be the one that tracks that, not not SPC. So SPC will actually sort of more pick up what would probably be the work from January on where, as Dr. White was describing, you know, where you start talking about developing the curriculum and that sort of thing. But the marketing piece and getting the word out and so forth, that's, that's definitely um the, and again, they're not doing the work. Um, they can provide, you know, the committee can provide guidance. The that committee, by the way, is um right now only Pamela and Kemba. So uh, and we'll probably want to put one of our new parent trustees on. That's later on the agenda. We've got some parent trustees that we're hoping um we can can bring on. Um, so then the job of those committees would be to monitor, to provide input and guidance if needed. Um, and we'll monitor those, as you've heard already, in our monthly CEO report. And you can see I've put some success indicators, which are the ones that I was aware of um that Dr. White already discussed, being ready for Ed Fest, that we hit our recruitment target. And then next semester, that the staff would complete all the prep work for that. So those
Erin, can we just uh?
Yeah.
When it says complete uh prep work, you know, give some examples or some of the key areas of the prep work that needs to be completed.
Yeah. So that's, this is the draft. And so that, this is what I need. So for example, um, if you want to, I don't know whether you've started talking about this yet in SPC, but that would be the kind of thing. That's definitely what your committee would be monitoring. So you, we can add that. Now, again, of course, this is a very high-level document. You you'll be doing the actual detailed work in the committee on it. But that, so you're, you're getting right to what we want there. And that's the kind of inputs. So if you can come back to me, and again, I'm not, I'm going to ask that, we're not, I know I said we were going to work it at work tonight, but I am just, I don't know, Dr. White, exactly um how long you're gonna want for the executive session. I I want to give that enough time. That's important.
And we could just, uh, I think your guidance there is good. We'll discuss that in the SPC meeting as to what what prep work is is involved and just have
Right. Okay. And and then we can just name a few things completes, you know, curriculum and scope and sequence or whatever it would be. Okay, the virtual Fridays, I know, Dr. White, you said you um have a plan. And I thought maybe since we're meeting tomorrow, I know it's not the topic, but maybe we can fill in that very quickly, because she already has um and presented that plan to the um, to the public charter school board. She presented in the plan what the criteria for success is. So we wouldn't be doing the work again, but we would be monitoring that the that those success indicators, you know, are being met. And then the last one is the one that's really our work. The the first year, we're just watching the school do their work, which is easy. Last one, we actually have to do the work. We've let all our board policies, um, or most of our board policies lapse. We haven't looked at them. Um, we may find that they're fine, but right now we can't even locate all of them. Um, we've located the finance ones. We, of course, have our conflict of interest on, which we'll talk about in a minute. Um, we have have some others that that um I inherited, like our CEO succession plan. We've got, um, we have an expulsion uh policy that's being currently revised legal counsel. So we have some we, what we started in the executive committee is um developing a plan for how we make sure we have up-to-date uh policies. So the first thing is we have to complete an inventory. So we have to figure out what do we have, what do we need? And then plan how we're going to review those, assign those to the different committees. And then come up, once we know what the work is, come up with a timeline for doing that work. And it may be that we find if we have a lot of policies that we need to develop from scratch, we may, it may be a two-year or maybe even a three-year timeline. I mean, we need to be realistic about what we can do, but we just need to essentially plan the work and know what work is ahead of us. So what I want is your input on this. Um, and again, we may not have a a time to do all of it tonight. Some of it you may want to do the committees. But I would like us to actually, if we can finalize this document in September at our September meeting, I'd like to vote on it. So let's take a few minutes and just get some reactions. Uh, what do you think? Are the, are these the right things that we should be working on? And are these the right folks that should be monitoring with that addition of that one committee? I don't know if that means you hate it and you're, um, you don't want to tell me, or um you don't want to do the work or somebody, somebody come off mute and tell me, is this what we should do? Or you don't, you want to do something else?
I mean, you know, I I'm new here, so I'm I'm not sure how mu- what shape the policies are in. It sounds like you said they lapsed, but I don't know how long they've been lapsed. They haven't been updated in ten years. I don't know.
Well, they haven't been updated in the time that I've been on the board, you know, systematically. There have been different ones. And I'm going into ten years. So yeah, that's probably a pretty good guess. And some of them we can't even find, right? But if you look in the governance and orientation folder, that's what we've got at this point. So we're going to start really, o- honestly, my first job is to go to the um uh, what's it called? Oh, my gosh, Ed, um, Education Partners. And um, and figure out which policies a good board is supposed to have.
Yeah, that was going to be my first, like, what is the guidance? Some, so we're not reinventing the real here.
That's right.
What is, what is, what's the policies are supposed to be there?
And hopefully it's not too many, but I'm, that's my job. I'm going to do that research and we'll start there.
Yeah.
Jeff, were you?
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, I was just going to, just in terms of uh formatting this thing, nothing substantive. It seems like the action items are listed under the, so the goal might be just, that might be the topic or whatever. And then those A B or whatever, the A B C could be under the actions. Then the question is who's responsible and uh what the frequency is. So it seems like it's a little repetitive or, you know, unless, unless the actions are different than the goal, which they
Okay. All right. Yeah, yeah, we're making it clearer.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And I think that the three are are are
And I think that the three are 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 helps us to focus on what we need to do going forward. But that's also assuming that the regular work of the board is still going on. We still have the finance committee. We still have the SPC. All those type of things are focused on academic performance and and the finances. But these are specialized things that we're going to focus on over and above those regular activities. So I think they're perfectly fine.
Okay. Yeah, I think we may have in our work plan last year had a statement to that effect at the bottom. So maybe I can add that back in, Sterling, something to say. By the way, this is not all, these three are not all we have to do. We have to do all the regular stuff too, maybe. And I can list it like you say. Okay. Any other feedback for right now on this? Okay, then in that case, we have, I think we don't have a lot to say about the new trustees, because I think we need to, Kimba and I need to connect with the Governance Committee on how we want to handle our, bringing on our parent trustees. We had talked about doing that slightly differently than we've done in the past to make sure that they're feeling welcome and inducted into into the way we do business. So let's skip over that. And then conflict of interest forms. Manya, I'm assuming it's the same. You want everybody to print that out, sign it and scan it and send it back to you?
Yes, and Will is going to send the, well, he's going to send me the vendor list and we're going to upload that. And then you guys can reference this before you sign the COIs.
Oh, that's right. We've got to look at that vendor list. So just a review for everybody, you're looking at the vendor list and you are, and make sure you're listening well that you can hear me. You're looking at it, and it's not that you can't have any thing to do with those vendors. It's that you can't in any way be advantaging them through your connection with PAWS. That's what you're vouching for. Is that right, more or less?
Close. If you are a relative or you are advantaging from one of these vendors, you have to disclose it. So it's not even that you you can't be connected to them. It's just that you have to state that you are connected. So but connected does not mean, you know, happy hour friend. It means relative or financial beneficiary. So of, I think Manya is the number five thousand. So anything below five thousand is not significant for our budget. But so the, yeah, so it's not, the 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 aim of this task is about honesty, not about disclusion. We're not, no, this rule is not trying to get anyone off or out of the situation. It's about making sure that our community is honest.
Okay, looks like we're going to run over, but let's try to go quickly if we can here. So are there any questions about the committee reports or anything that anybody wants to add to what's there? Okay, our next board meeting, September twenty-seventh. And I just want to mention while we're talking about dates, we're going to run into the usual problem on the second Monday of October, we need to move our SPC and our executive committee probably a week later. So just while I'm thinking of it. Anyway, now we need to move into our executive session. And Kemba has already agreed. So if we go back to the closed session form, Kemba has agreed to the motion that is on there. Kemba, I don't know if you want to.
And I can't read it. I can't see it from my phone. Because I'm still at work. I can't read it. But there was a motion to close the meeting to discuss. And then it, the accurate language is in there to discuss Park Data. And the motion is to close the meeting so that we can discuss student information, which should be kept private.
So thank you, Kemba. And I need a second to that motion. If you want to see the exact wording, it is on the form. So Sterling is seconding it. Thank you. So now we need to vote, to vote to that we are agreeing to close the the meeting so that we can discuss the the student data. So Terry?
Yes, hi.
Uh, wait, 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 hold on. We need to pause really quickly. Let me go refer back to the open meetings back because I don't know if we just did it the right way. I don't think we did it the right way, but let me go back and check really quickly. Somebody play the Jeopardy music.
As you're looking, Christina, I tried to be you. I went back to it and it referenced, of course, making sure that we had a valid and legitimate reason. We still have to record the meeting, although Manya will stop the live streaming of it. They were like, Manya, do you have those three points that were from the summary document that referenced?
And while Manya's pulling that up, I do want to say, by the way, we did post on our agenda forty-eight hours in advance that we were going to close it.
Perfect. Okay, that that was the main thing that I was checking for to see what the notice was. And if you already did that, never mind, let's go forth and vote.
Yes, so Manya made sure that we did that in time. Yes, thank you. Okay. Then let's see, we were on Kemba, I think. Did you vote yes? Yep. Okay, and then Jeff?
Yes.
Sterling?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Shamira?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Roxanna?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So we.